Want to use mine?
No.
Because I'm the one who has to answer those questions. We'll get it together.
Yeah.
Pull this one out for me since I'm fingering it.
Sorry.
Oh, really? Now I have to...
Thank you so much.
Do they have some way to do this in exclamers?
They are minors.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Salisbury City Council on March 20th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would ask everyone, please, to silence any electronic devices that they have. And if you need to take a phone call, please take it outside the chamber. Should an emergency arise, please do not use the elevators. Exit the chambers, make a right-hand turn, go down the stairs. Should that, for some reason, be blocked, please make a left and a right and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask, and we will be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a legislative agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2417 for the second reading.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudasil. Mr. Telling, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I feel naked without my phone.
Well, thank goodness you're wrong.
Ordinance number 2417, an ordinance to the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2017 general fund budget to appropriate funding for additional fire department personnel and promotions. Whereas the fire department has a need for an additional four firefighter emergency medical technicians, and whereas the fire department has a need to add two captains to its current allocation, and whereas there are insufficient funds available in the FY 2017 fire department budget to fund the additional four positions, now therefore be ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Paragraph one, increase current surplus available 01000-469810 by $116,422.16 and increase the fire department budget by an equivalent amount.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2417, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Chair votes aye. There being no other business for the special meeting, the meeting is now adjourned. And now we will welcome you to the work session of May 20th, March 20th, May, I'm trying to rush it. Okay. First item on the agenda, Mr. Hall, we're going to hear about the corridor study planning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Back in FY, during FY 17, the city allocated funds to the planning department for several different planning studies. Two of these planning studies have already come before council at this moment, including the city of Salisbury Master Bike Plan Network, and more recently, the Urban Greenway Plan. As part of the final plan, we have in front of you the draft transforming US 13 in the Salisbury Boulevard planning document. Roughly, this plan is looking at the four-mile commercial and industrial zones district along Route 13 from K Avenue up to Pine Way. As most people know, it's almost, as some would say, a tale of two Salsburies. On the south end, south of East Main Street, you have a predominant presence with Salisbury University.
Excuse me a second, Keith. April?
Yes?
Could you do me a favor? There's a lot of background noise. Could you put it on mute right now, and then if you need to ask a question, you can come off of mute, and I'll hear the change?
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson's actually in Florida and calling in, and she's a little under the weather as I was the last couple of weeks, so. Thank you, April.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure that, wait a minute. Okay. Wait.
Technology's wonderful.
So there's some very distinct areas along this commercial and industrial zone corridor of US Route 13, most prominent being Salisbury University in the downtown area, with some of the area in between. And then as you're going north towards Pine Way, it's more harder to discern the actual individual neighborhoods, because we have an opportunity to increase a sense of place as we're going through there. So we brought in professional planning services from JMT. We have consultants with us today, which I will introduce shortly, that have gone through and looked at some of the possibilities for this corridor, have defined different character zones, which we'll get all into that with this terminology, what that terminology means. In addition, you'll start to see some renderings and some pictures that will look at stuff in a vertical nature, an architectural standpoint. A lot of times, from a planning perspective, when I'm looking at land use and zoning, I'm looking at the horizontal. I'm not looking at the built community. Also, when it comes to development review, traditionally, you're looking at one project at a time. So this plan is taking a cohesive look of what could these areas look like in the next 20 to 50 years, keeping in mind that all this will be driven, majority-wise, by the private sector. You'll see certain things in the plan that may have the appearance that we're looking to go in and start raising buildings and putting new ones up. That is not the intent. It's just to really give you a perspective about maybe some potential land use, and then also from the scale perspective of what things would look like, from heights, cross-sections of roads, travel patterns, circulations, and so forth. So if there's no questions of the council, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the project team we have with us today. We have Alicia Lorber with JMT. We have Brad Rogers, and we have Anna Pierce here, that are going to present the plan. If at any time council has any questions, please feel free to stop, and we'll take care of those questions on a one-by-one perspective. Okay?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Do you want us to do this by page, or how would you prefer?
Do you want to do the, it's a recommendation for your consideration that we do the PowerPoint first, and then we'll open up the whole document. However, it would be good to have an overview of the terminology and what the intent is, and more importantly, what the intent is of the plan.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So we are very excited and honored to be working with the city of Salisbury on this great project. And Route 13, it's a really important part of Salisbury, because Salisbury would not be the crossroads of the Delmarva Peninsula and the capital of the eastern shore without Route 13. And it's a very important arterial to this community. However, when you look at this corridor today, it doesn't really look that important. It looks kind of like anywhere. It looks like a strip corridor with lots of nondescript land use, nondescript architecture, not particularly aesthetically pleasing, not very pedestrian or bicycle friendly, maybe not even very transit-friendly. And there's a lot of problems with it. And this is how a lot of people experience Salisbury, is by driving through on Route 13, and it doesn't necessarily give the best impression of the city that it can. So it really, it has a lot of potential. And even though you might look at it today, and it might not be the best-looking corridor today, it has so much potential to be so much more, and that's why we're very excited to be working with you on this plan. So I'm going to go through just an overall summary of the plan, and feel free to ask specific questions when you feel like you want to, or if you want to wait till the end, that's great, too. For our planning process, we started out with a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that's a really important foundation to the planning process, because that's where we find what are the good assets that we can work with, and that we can build upon, and what are some of the issues that we want to address. And so that was an important foundation to this planning process as well. And then from that, we worked with some stakeholders during a charrette. We came up with a vision for what we thought this corridor should be. And then we also came up with independent visions for different character zones along the way. We've divided this corridor up into six character zones. It's four miles, and you can't expect it to look the same, and to feel the same, and to operate the same for four whole miles. So we've divided it up into six different character zones that will each have their own unique vision and targeted strategies. And within those character zones, we've identified what we feel are the catalyst projects that could be the projects that really help to attract more investment, and more development, and economic growth. And with that, with those catalyst projects, and with more developers attracted to coming in here and doing things a little bit differently, the city can get a lot of economic benefits and growth from that. So the step-by-step planning process, as we started with the inventory analysis, which was part of that SWOT analysis I talked about, and also really looking at specific locations for different projects, and important features and resources along the way. And we did a visioning exercise, where we were trying to think about what can this corridor be, and what do we want to work towards? And then what are the goals and strategies that we can do to support that vision? And then from there, what's the strategic plan to make it work? And that's the point where we are now, is coming up with the strategic plan, so that this isn't just a vision anymore, it's something that we're going to work towards making a reality. So the vision, the recent branding exercise that the city had done inspired us, and we found this logo that is calling Salisbury "the comfortable side of coastal." And that really spoke to me. And Salisbury is a place that, it's the capital of the eastern shore, it's one of the major metropolitan areas of the eastern shore, and this is the place that we want people to, they want to live, or want to do business, or want to come to vacation or recreational opportunities. So we want Salisbury to be the place that provides all of the amenities and resources for all people, young, old, wherever their backgrounds may bring them from, so that they have what they need to stay here in Salisbury. So Salisbury is where you want to live. That's our vision statement. The goals are creating a corridor that is distinctive and economically thriving. That's critically important, that's the number-one goal. Making places for people and not just for cars. Today, the corridor is dominated by auto-oriented development. You can't really get around safely unless you're in a car. We want that to change. We want to be providing transportation options with better multimodal linkages, so that you don't have to take a car. You can walk, you can bike, you can take a shuttle bus to get to different areas. And the land use really needs to complement that as well. There needs to be a sufficient density to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And overall, we want to change the way people see Salisbury Boulevard. We don't want to think of it as US 13 anymore. It's too utilitarian. We want to think of it as Salisbury Boulevard. So these are the six zones that we've designated along the corridor. Up at the top is Peggy Branch, following down, Family Destinations, the downtown area, the hospital area, the connection zone, and the university zone. I'm going to talk a little bit about what each of these mean. And they work independently, but they also work together to make the corridor a whole corridor. I'm going to start at the bottom, or on the south side, I should say, in the university zone. This is an area that we think has a lot of potential. This is the redevelopment plan proposed for the corridor, and I'm going to say that you're seeing a lot of new building footprints, and landscape changes, and overall site planning changes. This is really a concept of what the development could be with zoning changes. We're not saying this is exactly how it will be developed in the future, but this is the vision that we see. It can be developed in the future. We're looking at making more high-density, making more residential units. This area in particular, we want to make it into more of a college town. So an important consideration for the corridor is the streetscape. And this is a consideration that is not unique to just this zone. This is a consideration that needs to be looked at corridor-wide, from the very bottom to the very top of the corridor, the whole four miles. Making more of a Boulevard feel is our goal here. Better landscaping, wider sidewalks, more crosswalks. In this, in the university zone, it's extra wide here. There's extra right-of-way here. And instead of having a sea of parking lots in between the lot lines and the buildings, we want to have on-street parking, and we want to bring the buildings up close to make it more like a pedestrian-friendly and more urban environment. And parking can be behind these buildings, along Tower Road or the roads behind, or internal to the buildings. Tower Road, I just mentioned, this is an amazing opportunity, we feel. Currently, it only lasts for a couple of blocks, but we see this as an important link to help create more of a grid pattern in the area. So this is going to be an alternative access road that runs parallel to Route 13 through the university zone, and it's even going to go further north up towards the hospital. And this is an important link, because this would service the parking for a lot of that new development that we envision along Salisbury Boulevard. And then there's also the city plans for the rail trail that would be along the railroad track. And so that is another really important connection. We didn't feel it was necessary to try and squeeze in bike lanes on Route 13 in between a lot of heavy traffic, when there's this great plan to have a north-south trail that accommodates that need for people to get from the university area up towards downtown, and even further north from there. The development, I talked about how we want it to be more urban, we want it to be more pedestrian-friendly, we want it to be more dense. And so we're talking about multiple stories, and we're also talking about mixed use. So the ground floor would be retail. It could be shops, it could be cafes and restaurants, and the kind of things that make for a lively streetscape that attracts a lot of people to want to walk, and caters to that large university population of students, faculty, and staff. These would be places people could walk from the university across the street and go get lunch, or have an apartment right there, and not have to drive. The next zone is the connection zone. We call it connections, because it's really important to us that this corridor be considered part of the city of Salisbury. And today, downtown feels a bit disconnected from the university. So what we want to do is, in this zone, make a better connection from the university into the downtown area. This is the concept land use plan for the connection zone, which has, again, a lot of mixed use. It's going to have a very similar look and feel to what we're proposing in the university zone, with housing and ground-floor retail, and that vibrant streetscape environment, so that people can still walk comfortably across the street, and go to the cafes, and shop in the interesting shops, and things like that. We're also looking at increasing student housing, having some new, almost, you know, a lot of these student housing developers are making these practically resort-like communities for students with the swimming pools and the fitness centers and things like that. They're fabulous, people love them, and we're envisioning something like that as some options for students, and also for young professionals or older professionals, they could live there, too. But also, because we're connecting to downtown, we're looking at more commercial use as well. So office space, and potentially even medical services, because the next zone is going to be the hospital zone. So today, the corridor has a lot of development that looks like this. Now, this isn't any particular spot, but this is very characteristic to the type of development you see on Route 13 today. Just a big parking lot, the parking lots are probably even a lot bigger than what this rendering shows. A building with a smaller footprint, it's only one story, it's very low-density, and it's not at all pedestrian-friendly. But as infill development comes in, it doesn't have to necessarily replace that, but it can expand within the footprint of that site, and really give you a better, the higher and better use of the land itself. And you'll get a lot more tax revenue with development like this as well. There's a couple of key things that we think are important to making the character what it is. I mentioned the rail trail. Here's an image of a trail along a railroad line. Can actually be a really nice corridor, a really nice atmosphere for people of all ages to walk or bike on. The top-right picture is, it's your standard big-box retail, but it's not your standard big-box retail. It's in an urban setting, and it's higher density, it's pedestrian-friendly, it fits in an urban environment, and it's still the big-box retail that people know and are familiar with. The bottom-left corner is a picture of how parking can be integrated into the footprint. So you're not necessarily, you don't have to waste all of the acreage of your lot for these expansive parking facilities. You can integrate them into the footprint of the building itself. And then the last, the bottom-right, is a picture of some new housing in the type of character that we envisioned for this area. The next zone, a little further north, is the hospital zone. Peninsula Regional Medical Center is in this area, and from what we understand, the hospital wants to expand. And this area, heading south closer to the university, we think is a great opportunity for expansion of the hospital. Does this by any chance have a, ooh, it does. Oh, but it doesn't work on the screen. Okay. So I'm going to try and talk you where it is. So we talked about Tower Road being the parallel route that is serving as the alternative north-south access road for a lot of the development along Salisbury Boulevard, but it's not going to parallel Route 13 for the entire corridor. We envision that Tower Road is continued north up into the hospital zone, and then turns towards Route 13 at the S-curve, if you guys know where the S-curve is. And then that creates a new southern gateway to the hospital campus. And so there's hospital expansion that is in that area, and also heading further south. And there's also expansion of commercial space, and again, it's going to be in the more urban character, with multiple stories, pedestrian-oriented streetscape, and, you know, landscaping, and a beautiful streetscape corridor. So the typical section is a little more narrow in this area, so we don't have room for parallel parking like we did down by the university. So we have a tighter corridor, but we keep the median, because that's an important aesthetic and traffic-calming feature. And we keep the wide sidewalks that are proposed. This is an important thing that's going to be continuous along the Route 13 corridor, are these nice, comfortable wide sidewalks. You'll see a transit shelter, because we also feel that improving transit connections with shuttle buses is an important way to help people feel connected, and not have to get in their cars to get between the university and downtown or points north. In this zone, we also are proposing along Carroll Avenue, a cycle track. There's a photo example in the top-right corner, and then the rendering shows how Carroll Avenue can be, the space can be reallocated. It's a roadway today with low average daily traffic volumes, with low ADTs. And we're proposing to, instead of having it four lanes, making it two lanes, with on-street parking on one side, and with a cycle track on the other side. And a cycle track is essentially an on-street, two-way bike facility, and it's protected with a planter, so that people feel much more comfortable being that much closer to the moving cars. The riverfront is also a really important part of this particular zone. This zone travels up towards the river. There are so many great riverfronts out there to look at, for examples. Up here, the examples I'm showing are from Frederick, Maryland, which is a relatively recent, I'm going to say within the past 10 years, they redid their waterfront, and it's a beautiful, very popular destination. If you haven't been there, I recommend checking it out. Some other examples are Greenville in South Carolina, in the top right. The bottom-left is San Antonio, Texas, which is perhaps one of the more famous river walks out there. And then Chicago, Illinois, who just recently started creating their own riverwalk, and just recently finished some construction, and they found that it's been a great economic development tool as well. And you see, in the Chicago example, they're getting a lot of kayak users, too, which is something I think would be great in Salisbury, is to promote some kayak use on the Waukesha River. The next zone is downtown. And downtown starts at the river in north, but that kind of development that I was just talking about along the riverfront, it would really be on both sides. We see that as a beautiful riverwalk with cafes and restaurants and green space around it. Some of the other development would be, we really wanted to focus on more of the Route 13 corridor for this particular study, because there have been some other recent studies that looked at downtown more holistically, and we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We think that those did a very good job of coming up with a vision for downtown, and we're trying to stay in keeping with that. So we're looking at what type of redevelopment could happen right along Route 13. And, let me see what's next. So one of the proposals that we had was looking at that intersection with Main Street and Route 13. I mean, that's really the gateway into downtown. And Main Street continues on the other side of Route 13 today, but it doesn't feel like it's part of downtown. It doesn't feel well-connected, because it's just not very pedestrian-friendly. It's hard to see over there, because the train tracks are blocking the view. So we wanted to really emphasize this intersection as an important intersection, and we're proposing to do a decorative brick pavement across the entire intersection that really makes a statement, with some kind of decorative feature in the middle, and a very wide sidewalk, or, I'm sorry, a very wide crosswalk at Market Street getting across. And we wanted to limit the traffic on Market Street, because that fifth leg in the intersection makes it even more difficult for the pedestrian to navigate through, and all the more dangerous for the car to try and get through. So we wanted to limit that and channel most of the traffic to go up to Main Street. And we're proposing to turn Market Street into more of a pedestrian-friendly street environment. It's not prohibiting car access.
Streetscape environment so that people can still walk comfortably across the street and go to the cafes and shop in the interesting shops and things like that. We're also looking at increasing student housing, having some new, almost, you know, a lot of these student housing developers are making these practically resort-like communities for students with the swimming pools and the fitness centers and things like that. They're fabulous, people love them, and we're envisioning something like that as some options for students and also for young professionals or older professionals, they could live there too. But also because we're connecting to downtown, we're looking at more commercial use as well. So office space and potentially even medical services because the next zone is going to be the hospital zone. So today, the corridor has a lot of development that looks like this. Now, this isn't any particular spot, but this is very characteristic to the type of development you see on Route 13 today. Just a big parking lot, the parking lots are probably even a lot bigger than what this rendering shows. A building with a smaller footprint, it's only one story, it's very low density and it's not at all pedestrian-friendly. But as infill development comes in, it doesn't have to necessarily replace that, but it can expand within the footprint of that site and really give you a better, the higher and better use of the land itself. And you'll get a lot more tax revenue with development like this as well. There's a couple of key things that we think are important to making the character what it is. I mentioned the rail trail. Here's an image of a trail along a railroad line. Can actually be a really nice corridor, a really nice atmosphere for people of all ages to walk or bike on. The top right picture is, it's your standard big box retail, but it's not your standard big box retail. It's in an urban setting and it's higher density, it's pedestrian-friendly, it fits in an urban environment, and it's still the big box retail that people know and are familiar with. The bottom left corner is a picture of how parking can be integrated into the footprint. So you're not necessarily, you don't have to waste all of the acreage of your lot for these expansive parking facilities. You can integrate them into the footprint of the building itself. And then the last, the bottom right, is a picture of some new housing in the type of character that we envisioned for this area. The next zone, a little further north, is the hospital zone. Peninsula Regional Medical Center is in this area, and from what we understand, the hospital wants to expand. And this area, heading south closer to the university, we think is a great opportunity for expansion of the hospital. Does this by any chance have a... Oh, it does. Oh, but it doesn't work on the screen. Okay. So I'm gonna try and talk you where it is. So we talked about Tower Road being the parallel route that is serving as the alternative north-south access road for a lot of the development along Salisbury Boulevard, but it's not gonna parallel Route 13 for the entire corridor. We envision that Tower Road is continued north up into the hospital zone and then turns towards Route 13 at the S-curve, if you guys know where the S-curve is. And then that creates a new southern gateway to the hospital campus. And so there's hospital expansion that is in that area and also heading further south. And there's also expansion of commercial space and, again, it's gonna be in the more urban character with multiple stories, pedestrian-oriented streetscape, and landscaping and a beautiful streetscape corridor. So the typical section is a little more narrow in this area, so we don't have room for parallel parking like we did down by the university. So we have a tighter corridor, but we keep the median because that's an important aesthetic and traffic calming feature. And we keep the wide sidewalks that are proposed. This is an important thing that's gonna be continuous along the Route 13 corridor are these nice comfortable wide sidewalks. You'll see a transit shelter because we also feel that improving transit connections with shuttle buses is an important way to help people feel connected and not have to get in their cars to get between the university and downtown or points north. In this zone, we also are proposing along Carroll Avenue, a cycle track. There's a photo example in the top right corner, and then the rendering shows how Carroll Avenue can be, the space can be reallocated. It's a roadway today with low average daily traffic volumes, with low ADTs. And we're proposing to, instead of having it four lanes, making it two lanes with on-street parking on one side and with a cycle track on the other side. And a cycle track is essentially an on-street two-way bike facility, and it's protected with a planter so that people feel much more comfortable being that much closer to the moving cars. The riverfront is also a really important part of this particular zone. This zone travels up towards the river. There are so many great riverfronts out there to look at, for examples. Up here, the examples I'm showing are from Frederick Maryland, which is a relatively recent, I'm gonna say within the past 10 years, they redid their waterfront, and it's a beautiful, very popular destination. If you haven't been there, I recommend checking it out. Some other examples are Greenville in South Carolina in the top right. The bottom left is San Antonio, Texas, which is perhaps one of the more famous riverwalks out there. And then Chicago, Illinois, who just recently started creating their own riverwalk and just recently finished some construction, and they found that it's been a great economic development tool as well. And you see in the Chicago example, they're getting a lot of kayak users too, which is something I think would be great in Salisbury, is to promote some kayak use on the Wacomiko River. The next zone is downtown. And downtown starts at the river in north, but that kind of development that I was just talking about along the riverfront, it would really be on both sides. We see that as a beautiful riverwalk with cafes and restaurants and green space around it. Some of the other development would be, we really wanted to focus on more of the Route 13 corridor for this particular study because there have been some other recent studies that looked at downtown more holistically, and we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We think that those did a very good job of coming up with a vision for downtown, and we're trying to stay in keeping with that. So we're looking at what type of redevelopment could happen right along Route 13. And, let me see what's next. So one of the proposals that we had was looking at that intersection with Main Street and Route 13. I mean, that's really the gateway into downtown. And Main Street continues on the other side of Route 13 today, but it doesn't feel like it's part of downtown. It doesn't feel well-connected because it's just not very pedestrian-friendly. It's hard to see over there because the train tracks are blocking the view. So we wanted to really emphasize this intersection as an important intersection, and we're proposing to do a decorative brick pavement across the entire intersection that really makes a statement with some kind of decorative feature in the middle and a very wide sidewalk, or, I'm sorry, a very wide crosswalk at Market Street getting across. And we wanted to limit the traffic on Market Street because that fifth leg in the intersection makes it even more difficult for the pedestrian to navigate through and all the more dangerous for the car to try and get through. So we wanted to limit that and channel most of the traffic to go up to Main Street. And we're proposing to turn Market Street into more of a pedestrian-friendly street environment. It's not prohibiting car access, but we want to really emphasize that the pedestrian is the main mode that we want to be traveling on that area. And so we're proposing to make it, again, with all decorative pavement, lots of landscaping, and to feel like an extension of that waterfront park. Again, we have the rail trail. This continues through the downtown area as well. Water features are a great example of ways to make downtown have more family-friendly and to add to the amenities and attractions of that waterfront park. That's my daughter in the water fountain there. There, we're also suggesting that events like festivals and farmers' markets are another great way to bring people downtown, make it the cultural destination of downtown, and that Market Street and waterfront area is a great place for that to happen. And there's also a proposal to build a new amphitheater along the waterfront, I think actually on the hospital side, but because that waterfront park is all part of that downtown area, that would be one of the main focal points of this waterfront park. There's a lot of infill development already happening in downtown and what we call adaptive reuse, where there are these beautiful old historic buildings and new businesses are coming in and renovating them and making them work for a new business. I think one of my favorite examples is the Acorn Little Shop over, it's not in the Route 13 corridor area, but it's downtown, not too far away. And I think that's a great example of taking an old historic building and making a lively streetscape and a great attraction that people walking by will want to stop in and go to. So that's the kind of development that we see happening downtown, is a lot of great adaptive reuse infill development, making a more lively streetscape. There's also the Lot E, which is today, a giant parking lot in a very prominent location right downtown at the corner of Church Street and Route 13. I understand that the city is looking at putting out an RFP, or maybe, you might have already done it, to do some redevelopment of Lot E. And we feel it's really important that that be a signature site, a signature piece of architecture, because that's gonna be one of the most visible corners, and that's gonna be, that's where people are gonna first experience downtown Salisbury as they're traveling along Route 13. So that can make a big statement. It should be oriented to the corner of Church Street and Route 13 and down, I forget the street just south of there. Do you remember?
Calvert.
Calvert, okay. So it should be oriented towards Route 13 with the parking oriented off of Poplar Hill or internal to the building. Also, a downtown hotel. Having spent some nights in hotels in Salisbury, I have to say, I wish there was some better options downtown, because most of the hotels are up and down the Route 13 corridor, not necessarily in walking distance to downtown. And even if they're in walking distance, it's not pedestrian-friendly to walk there. So we think it's really important that downtown and also the hospital area have a hotel for the people who want to be downtown and near the hospital. And then we took from the envisioned downtown Salisbury plan, the proposal to do an environmental center just on the other side, just on the east side of Route 13 at the waterfront. We think that that could be a really great amenity and destination that could be another catalyst project for the corridor. I mentioned shuttle buses earlier, and one of the core things that we're trying to do is to get people out of their cars, because if you're out walking or biking, you have more tendency to stop and shop. And you might not necessarily walk all the way from the university up to the north side of the corridor, or even as far from the university to downtown, it's probably just about two miles. Some people might, but not everyone. So a shuttle transit system is an important part of our vision to get people out of their cars and better connected to downtown. So we see this as four loops that are running very frequently. The important, I would say the priority would be to do the two southern loops. They run in one direction, so you have the yellow route is running, well, I think they're both running clockwise actually. And so one's running down Route 13, one's running up Route 13, and then they're servicing the neighborhoods just on either side. And then a similar shuttle system is proposed on the north side that can service the communities and businesses north of downtown, all the way up towards the shopping mall, the big mall center at Salisbury, is that what it's called? And connect people from as far as that shopping mall down to downtown. So headways, 15 minutes or less would be ideal so that you don't necessarily have to say, okay, I'm gonna try and catch the next bus in half an hour. You can go to your stop and wait no more than 10 to 15 minutes, ideally less if you get there at the right time to hop on your shuttle bus and get where you need to go. The next zone is what we're calling family destinations. So this is a zone that we see as a place that cares to families, not just in Salisbury, but in Wacomiko County and the larger region around us. So this is a place that has lots of great recreational opportunities, like gymnastics center and rock climbing and sports and different things, swimming pool, like a public swimming pool, and also more neighborhood-oriented commercial shopping centers. So people who are living in the neighborhoods nearby can stay within the neighborhood to go get their groceries or go to the bank and go to the dry cleaner or go to their daycare center, or even just the coffee shop. They don't have to necessarily travel outside of their neighborhood to get those amenities that they need right there. And that's one of the things that's lacking in this area today. There are a lot of neighborhoods near here, but this area is a lot of underutilized or vacant industrial space or commercial space, and it's not really oriented towards any of the neighborhoods nearby. And that's what we want to change. We want this to really serve the families. And some of the destinations could be destinations that attract people from even beyond the So there's talk of the city putting in a recreation center in this area. That would be a great catalyst project. There's the existing train station that is vacant, but this is a great adaptive reuse site. It would be right on the trail that's proposed along the railway. And if you can imagine getting on the trail with your family and stopping here at either a bike rental or an ice cream shop or a donut shop or a coffee shop or all of the above, this would be a really great amenity for that trail and for the neighborhood as a whole. And then again, these are some images of more neighborhood-scale shopping to serve the people of these communities. We also feel that there's a lack of open space. And in the plan, you can see some patches of green throughout, and the open space should be designed so that it engages families. The top left example is a park that, it's not your standard playground, it's actually a musical playground, and kids can, you know, bang, that's like a giant xylophone. Kids can bang on it and make music, and then there's all sorts of other features around. So it's a really great interactive type of a playground, but it's also the type of playground that anyone can play on, even if you're a child in a wheelchair, you can enjoy it to the same extent as any other able-bodied child. But also, looking at recreational opportunities for your teenagers, so skate parks, rock-climbing gyms, sports and recreation geared stuff, this can be the area where a regional draw for some really great recreational amenities that are lacking in the area. And again, we're looking at housing opportunities. As Salisbury continues to grow, there's going to continue to be a need for more housing because there's so much low-density sprawling industrial land in this particular corridor, there could be potential to turn some of that into some new housing as well. And the northern section is what we're calling Peggy Branch, which we named after the stream that was named Peggy Branch on Google. And I've just recently found out that you have a different name for it, so we can rename it. But we're naming it after the stream because that is a really important amenity as well. The power of the waterfront, everyone knows that waterfront properties have a higher value and everyone wants to be near the water. But you go through this corridor today in this particular area, you don't even know it's there. It's sort of behind buildings and you can't even really access it. And we want to change that. We want to flip it around and make the waterfront a prominent feature. So this is the layout for the area. Similar to the family destinations, we see more recreational opportunities, more family-oriented businesses, and potentially even some private recreational amenities or public pools, things like that. Also some more housing and really having more open space. But the theme overall is, we see this as being Salisbury sort of green and sustainable district. So this is where your green and sustainable type of businesses will come, so like your outdoor outfitter-type places or plant nurseries and different cafes and things that have outdoor seating. We want this to be the green and sustainable and environmentally friendly area, not that the rest of the corridor isn't, but we want to really feature the outdoorsy green character here and have better access to the water and to open space. Having more recreational opportunities, even sports and recreation sites like your ball fields and lacrosse fields and football fields and play spaces and splash pads are a really great way to add an amenity, a very family-friendly amenity, and you don't necessarily need the lifeguard, so that's a really great amenity. And then the housing as well, we're envisioning townhouses, and I have two images of different types of townhouses, a more traditional kind, and then you can even, it would be appropriate here to have maybe a more modernist look that can really stand out and be an attractive amenity for people who are interested in that kind of a building. So Brad, where are you? Here you are. Brad is gonna talk a little bit about the economic value and some marketing strategies for the city moving forward.
So this is obviously a whole lot to digest. I want to go from the level of detail we've been in so far and take it up to a broader level of analysis. The underlying paradigm for economic development in towns and cities across America is beginning to change. The traditional paradigm throughout the 20th century was like this. Employers decided where they wanted to locate their facilities based upon a logistical analysis and looking at tax policy and their product and their markets and the infrastructure, and then employees followed those jobs to live where the employers decided the businesses would be. Increasingly, as we move into the 21st century, that model is being turned on its head with a growing percentage of workers choosing where they want to live based upon aesthetic and cultural and quality of life factors, and businesses following talent to where they want to be. And so it's very important to understand this vision for Salisbury Boulevard as not just an aesthetic issue, but indeed as a major effort to position Salisbury to capture growth and opportunity in the 21st century. And that starts from a very, very young age. Oftentimes, we're now seeing young people leaving college and immediately deciding where they want to put down roots, and if they can't even get a job there, they will start the business that will become the growth industry of the future. And so capturing that stream of entrepreneurial energy is often a major part of the game now. This may all be stuff that is very obvious to you and intuitive, but it's important to set the scene for why we're trying to talk about this. So again, this is a 20- to 50-year vision for where Salisbury is going to become, and it's really critical to begin thinking about this now because the three archetypal places that form the substrate for the 21st century economy are thriving, vibrant, active communities adjacent to universities, hospitals, and government centers. Those are the three archetypes that are forming the backbone of the 21st century economy. And that's what we're trying to sketch out here, the opportunity to make that happen, particularly but not exclusively on the southern side of town. And we just want to reinforce the fact that these issues of pedestrian friendliness, of aesthetics, of the design of the built environment are no longer sort of warm and fuzzy topics separated from the mature grown-up topics of attracting a factory to come work in your town. Those subjects have merged into one discipline, and that is the terrain on which economic development competition is happening in America right now. And we think Salisbury is exceptionally well-positioned for that.
So with that, this has been an introduction and an overview to the plan. You all have copies of the draft plan, and we welcome and encourage you to give us your input because we want this to be a plan that you all support and believe in.
Let me start, I guess. First of all, we just got this plan Wednesday, last Wednesday. And reading through it obviously can be overwhelming, and certainly was for me. So from my perspective, I think the important thing is to look at what you've presented to us, and then our responsibility to the constituents and to the citizens of Salisbury, from my perspective, is going to be to go out and get feedback. Once people have had an opportunity to see what has been presented, and really let it sink in for a little while, because this is fairly new to us in terms of concept. And I think, I'm safe to say, I think that the younger of us, like Mr. Rudicil and Mr. Irtin, probably are more in tune than I am, but I think that that's our job. I think it was done very professionally, and I think I have, I think I don't know enough to ask appropriate questions at this point. And I'm sure that this is the beginning of a process very similar to Greenway and Bike Master Plans and everything we've been through, where it's a living document that's gonna have to be worked on, and that's how I envision it. Anybody else have any comments about it?
What Route 13 looks like now is because the people who were in charge of Salisbury agreed that that's what they would do for the existing businesses that are there. At the time, a perfectly good idea.
Right.
Maybe not a perfectly good idea to run Route 13.
In 1950, that was a great idea.
Exactly. So my question is actually not for you, because having sat through Greenway and White Way, I'm well, I've now got the jargon down, but it's more for these gentlemen here. But it's more for these gentlemen here because now, let's take a look at Beagle and Park Drive. If we're not going to ask for these things on Beagle and Park Drive, then we are just going to create another Route 13 that is congested, that looks, as it was described in the paper, as ugly. So my question to us, that if this is 30 to 50 years out, Beagle and Park is now. Are we going to say, I want this up at the road. I want wider sidewalks and everything that comes. Because right now, to be honest with you, you've got a curb cut in every place that every person who ever wanted a curb cut asked for it. And that's where the problem came. Have you seen a shake? The expert in the room is shaking their head, Ms. Nichols, if you could write that down in the minutes, please. So in terms of this, and again, you are speaking the Jake Day Bible speak, which we, I, a little bit older than he is, Harvey, a little, probably the same age, we get some of it, but we have been conditioned to get in the car and go to the Dunkin' Donuts or get in the car and go to the Rise Up. We have been conditioned to do that here. So my two questions are, A, if we know we don't want Beagle and Park to look like Route 13, what are you all doing to make sure that isn't happening? Because if these things supposedly bring better development, more development, more tax money, as you indicated, please start doing that now on Beagle and Park Drive so that I can live long enough to see a budget larger than the one, than the year before. So if, I don't know how you would answer that. You don't have to. You could go back and start doing it tomorrow and I would never know. But I think that you have an opportunity to show us what can work on Route 13 by doing exactly what they're saying to do on Route, on Beagle and Park Drive now. The other thing I have for you is, and this is a question, Mr. Hall and, and, and Mr. Lennox, that I've been asking since day one of this administration. Where are the form-based codes that you need? Because we got Greenway, we got Bike and now we have Route 13. Everybody at this table has consistently said, we will support you on the zoning changes. We will support you to an extent that we can when it comes to, do you need the money to do this? When I look at their rendering of, of Route 13 and Main Street, I'm seeing the other presentation that you did about, so I'm in it. I'm in it to win it. But I need to know, Mr. Day and I fist pumped across the table during the Bike thing and said, we won't let this sit on the shelf. So the zoning changes, the money, the courage to amortize properties so that they do not get grandfathered and aren't made to do this because we're suffering in our neighborhoods because we did not do that? My question for you and really for the mayor is, is, and, and the mayor is a wonderfully, wonderfully intelligent young man. And we just do things a little differently. This is the big wave and we're looking for the things underneath that, that, that need to be done. And now we've had three of these plans. And, and we need, we need to know, the Tower Road thing is incredible. For the life of me, I just remember my mother's Ford LTD, you know, bottoming out back there after we left the Dairy and went across the street to the firestone, as it was right there, went across the street, Greg. So that's my question for you, for staff. My question for you is this, and this is harder, because I just, I went to a funeral in Wilmington, Delaware, and then had to go to Arlington, Virginia in order to save my personal relationship from all the time I spend doing all of this. I can't get on public transportation. I have to get, I can't get on public transportation in Arlington because I have a car. So I spent 45 minutes driving around and around the above of these places that you described that are now $3,100 a month for two-room apartments. So what I read is that this is from the opponents of this, not the opponents of what you do because that looks, it's wonderful and it's right. But what I have to try and explain is, to some people, gentrification actually means displacement. So where do the people go who can't afford to live in a place like that? Because as we sat there, when we finally got in the Little Italian Restaurant, we watched bus after bus after bus go by and there's not a single sub. Now granted, it was Saturday night, it was St. Patrick's Day, so I know where I would have been. But I need to be able to assure, can you answer that now? I just have a suggestion for the four, for the five of us and then I'm done.
Yeah, so directly looking at the residents. Our plan along the corridor focuses on commercial and industrial sites. We are not proposing changes to neighborhoods. We love the neighborhoods. We want this corridor to be beneficial to the neighborhoods, to help the neighborhoods, to give the neighborhoods resources and services that they're currently lacking and for them to be able to walk to them, to walk to an ice cream shop or whatever it is that they want to walk to that they can't walk to today. Or maybe they could, but they might get run over by a car. So, so that's the first part.
That would be what happened. It would go back to the quality of life issues that you, that you mentioned and that leads back to the gentrification and the displacement.
Yeah, so, so there's commercial properties. I'm going to, I'm going to talk about it from displacing commercial properties and not displacing residents. So the commercial properties, we're talking about redeveloping them, but businesses today that want to remain Dunkin' Donuts, Dairy Queen, the Nail Salon, there will still be retail space, it just won't look the same. And the Dunkin' Donuts and the Nail Salon and whatever, whatever businesses are there will have other retail opportunities to move into new buildings that are nicer buildings.
Let's go there then, because right now they've got a building that's either paid for or so old. Because you made this list of things going up and down and all you can see is the tire store, four tire stores. What you envision does not include what I see on the street in my hometown. So if we want to create a different building for them, what is the incentive for them to come onto this plan in your other charrettes and trying to get people involved? If it's going to be a more expensive building with higher rent, even though it's new, which will look nice, it won't look like it. So I'm just trying to figure out how those people stay, because we did make mistakes, honestly. We made mistakes. We put commercial right next to residential. Instead of residential going all the way to the main corridor, we stuck in, when properties went bad, we stuck in commercial in between North Salisbury Boulevard and Division Street. I mean, we made mistakes and there's, there's nothing we can do about that. But I'm just, I'm trying to figure out because I'm, I live in the, in the family destinations, which you did write, are not well positioned to undergo major transformations, which kind of made my heart sink a little bit.
So what I'm going to say is that this isn't something that's going to happen all at once. So the tire shop could still be there for the next 20 years, but ultimately, the property value is going to change as new, you know, all of this can't be built at once. There's going to be one, that's the first one. And I would even argue that Seagull Square is almost kind of the first one, but it's not quite there, in my opinion. It, the building is really close to what we're talking about with the ground floor retail and the apartments above, but it's still set back behind a parking lot. So, so if we just took that building and brought it closer to the street, that's what we're talking about. And I think that if Seagull Square was built in that way today, people would be like, what's that building? Because it just doesn't look like anything else that's there. But the next one that comes in could be that Seagull Square up against the road and then the one after that could be. So it's going to happen, you know, the next one might be next year and then there might be another one the year after that. But there's four miles of properties here and there, it's just, it's going to take time for each of them to change. And zoning is an important part of facilitating that change so that we know it's not business as usual.
That would be my question to you, is that if we make the zoning changes, and I am more than willing to do, for you, to do this, are we going to grandfather in properties that have the curb cut and the park line up front? If we're not willing to say, this is the new normal, you're, you're going to do this or you're not going to do anything. I don't want us to make the same mistakes we made in history, which was, oh, now Keith, come on now, you'll get the curb cut. Jack, now we gave one to Keith, so we're going to give one to you and then we're on the same boat again. The question is, is will you recommend that we have the strength, the intestinal fortitude to say, these codes that will change and transform? It's very easy to do it down by the university because you have university with buy-in, you have the state because it's the university. And you'll see, it doesn't go any further north than the light at the university. Let's, let's be clear about that. And you have all the businesses right on the other side of the street who benefit no matter how a, a young person from the university gets across the street. It stops right there. You might be able to get it to go to South Boulevard and maybe to North Boulevard, but then you're coming up on the curbs. So I, I don't think, I think you're, you're great. You, you all did for bikes and for this, but I think for us, it's how do we lay the groundwork that says, either when the tire business or red light district building, let's just say, let's say that one changes hands, let's, let's go high in the sky. How do we, how do we change it so that that person is made to come up front, park in the back? And now there's a median going down the middle of the road that says, if you want to get there, you've got to go a much different way than what has been done in the past.
Ms. Glan says, I think, has a little comment about your.
Sure.
She does.
To Councilman Irtan's point, this, this plan is the first step in moving towards form-based codes. And I think it's, you know, we have to keep in mind that we have to adopt the plans and laws now to shape our future going forward. And this is the first step in that. So we will be moving forward with form-based codes.
And I'd like to add to that as well. From a planning perspective.
If you want to do a two-minute of what form-based codes is just for.
Yeah, but, yes, I'll do that. However, this plan does not come up with the ultimate solution. This plan is looking through a lens of no constraints. If there were no environmental constraints, if there were no utility constraints, if there were no financial constraints, if there were no right-of-way constraints, if there were no private, private property constraints, here's some of the great things you could do. And that's the type of vision setting that we have to start with in these type of discussions, which really get down to the function of land use and more specifically, down to zoning. So this plan's going to set together whatever its final iteration is, what are some of the proposed land use changes? And one of the things I took away from Ms. Lorber is, within the corridor, we're not really looking for a lot of changes of the actual industrial and commercial uses. It's more the form and what, what it will be located, what the streetscape will look like, what the community will look like. So it's a starting point for the discussion. We're not requiring or requesting any action of the council at this time. Jack and I will be back in front of you for many other work sessions until we feel comfortable with this. We'll use this tool as a resource once we get it refined and it reflects the administration and the council. More importantly, there, there's many ways to achieve what you've expressed. And I don't want to automatically jump to the conclusion of form-based codes. Sometimes it can be done with modifying your current Euclidean zoning code. It could be as much as a, exactly. It could be an overlay.
We use the word Euclidean.
It could be an overlay. So imagine.
We win. Every other city council in the country, we win.
Imagine, Mr. Irtan, that you would have these, these floating areas, so to speak, that you would lay down over a jurisdiction where there might be a certain set of regulations in that area that are different to an area adjacent to it or in another part of the city. It's not going to be a one-size-fits-all approach. What will work downtown might not work on Beagle and Park Drive.
Well, why not?
I was going to say, how come we can't do densities and then move out?
Because the difference of the type of areas on Beagle and Park Drive.
You discussed the number of restraints, but it seems to me there will be fewer restraints on Beagle and Park Drive. It's centrally located, it's just off of the bypass. In modern urban areas, the bypass is the new Main Street effectively. So why aren't we considering Beagle and Park Drive?
Well, like I said, each area is unique into itself. When you start looking at Beagle and Park Drive, you have an area that's going and meandering between the city and county. So there's different regulations there. You have an area with environmental constraints that would have to be taken into consideration, such as you've got Shoemaker.
But that doesn't mean you can't ask for the wider sidewalk, like the picture showed.
Oh, absolutely not. And that's, that's a great part of this. We're looking for your, for your consensus of an a la carte of sorts, that this is your menu in front of you. Where would you like these certain items to work? Where won't they work? And I think that again, has to be looked at on a case-by-case situation.
Conversely, in my humble opinion, we didn't, what we did before was say, this is what we have, but what we did is say to everybody who wanted an exception, they got it. So I'm trying to figure out how that isn't the same as what you're pointing out right now. Because standards are standards and the higher the standard, the better off we're going to be. If we make our standard, here's our standard, but if you want to do it differently or it's in a different place or it's in, it seems to me, Route 13 at one time was just like Beagle and Park Drive.
What, what you're seeing in that built environment is a set of stitched standards over time. You might've had a certain standard in the 1960s as far as the setback, height, variance parking. A different standard in the 1980s, a different standards in the year 2000. That's what brings it to not being a cohesive place. So really, as this, as we develop these standards, it's moving forward. It's not necessarily looking backwards as far, as far as trying to get what would be an issue of compliance for existing development to new standards. That's very challenging. It has the opportunities to redevelop, to do infill development like your comprehensive plan focuses on. We will move forward and bring those in and as Ms. Lorber kind of indicated, they will be the new incubators. They're going to be the new model. That's going to be what sets off future development, encourages it, and it's going to all be under one set of defined standards so it does have a more uniform look of a place.
Is it, can you compare the cost to a person, the tire center right behind shipment, right there that's empty? Let's just take that building. To do what we're saying here, we could, and stop me because, because I don't know the process. We could either say, here are the new rules, this is what you'll have to do with the property. Or we could give an exception to the, the building to stay the way it is in order to get something in there. And that's where we face a lot of the things now that we have. Do we, do we let it sit there in the hopes that somebody comes in? So my question to you is, in the cost to do these things, is it cheaper the old way or is it cheaper your way?
The, so the cost to the developer or to the city?
To the developer.
So it, it will cost more to build a higher density, but it will also give them more leasable space to have higher revenue.
So if we were going to take a look at this quarter and you, I, I will yield to you when you say too far ahead and you throw down the line and I won't go past it.
We've got a couple more minutes.
Okay, we've got a couple more. I love this. This is the, should we do this one? If, if we took that parcel and we said, well, it can stay vacant, would it behoove us to try and either A, make it economically feasible, because I don't want to use the other, the other word, what could the city do to make that parcel more economically ready and feasible to do what it is that you, you see us doing?
Okay, so what I'm seeing is, and I want to go back to an earlier statement that you said about our analysis was that the, the family destination zone, which is the, the parcel you're talking about is in that zone?
It's, well, no, actually, yes, it is. It'd be a block from there.
Okay, so, either way.
It'd be a huge competitor.
So when we initially took a look at the corridor, we saw the university as being, that's going to be the easiest sell to developers because they're just going to be like, boom, students.
It's because there's money there.
Yeah, right.
Let's call it what it is.
Right. So, so our assessment was, okay, it might be a more difficult sell in the northern parts of the corridor because there's just, there's not a lot of character to it today. But it can be your priority and the city's priority to really target, okay, we really want to invest in this and we're going to do our part. We're going to put in this rec center, we're going to do the streetscape improvements, we're going to do the trail and focus on those areas, what the city can do to prioritize it first. And then in talking with developers and with the new form-based codes and, and I know you all talk to developers. know you all talk to developers, sell it as, you know, this is where we want you to, to do it, this is where we need it, it's gonna be successful because we've got all these residents that want this amenity. That's how it happens.
So let's go back to the tire list.
Okay.
Do we, and, and we're not saying anything we haven't said before in open session, put some of those parcels along the north prom? If they are a tax sale and they are part of the prom, could we please just go get them? So my question to you is, should, should our, should the administration be looking for opportunities up and down the corridor?
Yes.
When things are for sale?
Yes.
We tore down the Thrift Travel Inn, which was a great, was great for the neighborhood and the quality of life, but there it sits, but here's an opportunity right there, right where we need it to look better.
Yes.
God, definitely need it to look better.
Yes.
So how do we, Jack, when somebody comes in, say, you're gonna put this at the street, you're actually gonna make the sidewalk wider, even if it's just up to a point?
Mm-hmm.
You connect it to what's going on at E.S. Atkins. How do we get that?
Come, Jack, yeah.
Thank you. I, uh, I appreciate Councilman Irtan's follow-up question to his initial question, because that's exact...
That's it, though. Not follow-up, but yeah, the other follow-up.
Because, because that was, and, and I continue to wanna say, Mayor Irtan, I'm sorry. The, um, that's the question that we face every day when you look at Keith and I, and you said, so what are you going to do? There are vacant buildings that want to be used. They do not have the capital to put them to use. Therefore, we have to answer that question, are we better off letting them rot? And that's one of the, the sort of leadership questions we're gonna have to wrestle with because when that property comes along and says, I wanna invest and I wanna renovate, but, you know, I, I need that parking up at the front and, and I'll invest my money, but I, but I can't build the building right up to the front there and put parking in the back, because that's where my building already is? Yeah, history has been that we work with them as non-conforming uses. We've never had collectively an appetite, an appetite to make those go away, short of what you're alluding to, I think, is perhaps, and that is acquisition. And putting together some mechanism, perhaps, to take those individual properties that in and of themselves, as, as the consultants have pointed out, in and of themselves, when you develop them, don't result in a product that we particularly want, but collectively put together and packaged together could do that. So I think we need to look at those mechanisms as well. Zoning is inherently negative. You're trying to figure out at the same time how we stop bad things from happening, but also how we encourage the good things. And so whether it be through community development corporation or other public investments, that's something that we have to wrestle with, in addition to zoning.
I, I think, if I could, um, we're at a great time right now, I think, and a great opportunity sits in front of us to, to try to get it right. Cause I will tell you, I remembered back to the mayor's roundtables at the Hilton when Paul Martin and Henry Parker, uh, when we first came into town, and that was all farmland up north. And I can remember some of the discussions that had transpired. And I can remember the discussions that took place, we've gotta do this to get these guys to come here. Cause that was at the time when we were...
Flatlined.
Flatlined.
Yeah.
And, you know, looking in retrospect, hindsight's always 20/20. And I wish I would've opened my mouth more back then, but by the same token, I'm going, yeah, we gotta get this. Because it's gonna take pressure off the rest of the people if we can bring more businesses and things into town. But this is an opportunity, I think, and the first step of, like I said, many, that it's gonna take to resolve this issue. We're not gonna resolve it tonight by any stretch of the imagination. I think the discussion so far has been very, very good, but I think that there's a lot of work that still needs to get done. And I have the same questions that you just asked and a, and a bunch more. You know, we could, we could spend, we could literally spend another three hours here, uh, but I don't think that would be, we would gain anything at this point in time. I'd like to think about it a little bit more. Do you guys?
And I, and I think maybe the one thing, you know, as we have these discussions, because these aren't one of, this is stuff we're gonna be talking about for the next couple of years. But I, I think maybe with the plans, the ultimate goal is to take these and make one plan, so that we have a, a, a vision for the entire city as a whole, and these are just chapters in that plan. And we can use that as the guide for the 20 to 50 years down the road. But just, you know, like you said, it's a living document. It's something that, you know, if we need to make changes to fit our community, that's what we'll do. But I think it just, everything needs to be put together so we don't have 10 different plans for here. You know, and, you know, some things merge, some things don't, you know, we, we saw that with the bike master plan and the downtown plan. But I think eventually, we just need to merge everything together so we have a, everything has a cohesive plan, everything's going in the same direction, everything ties into everything else, so, so that, that, cause we are one city, but we have many things that connect us and divide us. And I think the ultimate goal is, is to just have a, a flowing city of pedestrians, bikes, uh, cars when we need it. But I think, you know, we all wanna get to the same, to the same place.
On page 58, it does say that this consulting company cannot provide detailed recommendations about zoning regulations without perform, without performing a comprehensive zoning analysis, which they were not asked to do.
Correct.
Might I just again say out loud, could we please ask for a comprehensive zoning analysis and then at least put a date on when? We have a lot of time on our agenda, and I say that with all due respect to everybody. We have a lot of time that we could do this.
I think, uh, I'll ask Ms. Glanz to take it back to the mayor.
Okay.
And, and get his comments. I will speak with him again about it, but I think, um, I, I really wanna thank you for the work that you did, obviously tremendous amount of work. And I do, I will save my page of questions for the next, cause I, I think I can clear, get some of them cleared up. But, um, I thank you for what you've done so far.
Do we, can I ask this question?
Sure.
Should, should we go ahead and put it on the agenda again at a certain date?
I think what we should do is, uh, at the next agenda meeting, you give me your input as to when you think, I'm, I'm thinking, for me to get some answers to these questions from my constituents, I'm gonna need probably a week or two, for sure.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get any further than a couple pages in.
Yeah, yeah. So we will, does that suit everybody? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So you do this on Beaglin Park Drive, right?
All smiles, because I live over there and I'm actually getting agitated, because, you know, I would like to see a comprehensive plan that actually includes my neighborhood, the western side. You know, I appreciate this push for, for, for downtown, and I understand it's probably not up to you all. I'm not sure how the agenda's set, I'm new at the table, but I would like to see my community. I'm, I'm looking at new buses for, that won't even touch and affect my, my, my constituents. And that's, that, that's frustrating. That's frustrating.
Would you suggest, and I don't know whether you could answer this question, with Beaglin Park Drive, the same type of plan?
I, 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 I don't, I don't see the point in incurring additional expense, you know? If we can glean information from this that will be effective, I like that because it looks like these are expensive. But I, you know, at this point, I'm questioning how, you know, we could come up with zoning rules, but then we have to measure, we have to balance whether or not the rule we come up with doesn't become a significant disincentive that prevents people from developing. And then, you know, how are we gonna get these initial properties that are willing to incubate in this city at this high expense? And who are gonna be the tenants of these buildings? And the truth is, people that are willing to pay this much to live in their homes, live in, in my community. So it, it, it's, I don't know. I'm thinking about it.
And the capital, I guess that's, that's the other, and we talk sometimes about what the impediments are to, for Salisbury in terms of bigger growth beyond just commercial. You know, yes, we are growing, but we are growing in one way and one way only, and that's commercial. Do we have the capital? What Ryan would say to me when we were eating in, in Arlington was, I can hear the conversation, I would say, Salisbury's the center of government, we should look like this. And he would say, the government that these people are living for is Washington DC. And he would gently say to me across the table, believe me, you are not Washington DC. So my question to you is, do we have anything big enough beyond hospital, university, and government that makes people, it's always the chicken and the egg with Jake and I, that's what we laugh about. What comes first, the business and then the people? Or is you're saying the people and not the business? So I mean, a, a discussion about, do we have, does this community as it stands right now have the capital to complete something like this? And does, does Jake have to be the mayor and we have to be the city council for the next 60 years in order, in order to see it through?
Okay. I, we, we both have responses to that.
Yeah. I'm sorry. A little bit, he's got it in his hand. He's got the gavel in his hand.
I know, I'm already going to go on.
So I do this type of work all across Maryland, all across the country. Salisbury is fantastically positioned, and in terms of all the different aspects of capital, um, uh, you have, uh, you have tremendous institutions. There are, there are certainly many cities your size across the country that would love to have a hospital, a university, and a, and a center of government in, in a, with a, an intact downtown and access to water. That, right, I mean, with, with excellent highway access, that's a lot to work with, right? Particularly a university that is growing and changing and thriving and really reinventing itself. The, uh, it is so easy to think, we, we don't have it, it's not here, we're not DC, we've never done this. That is, that is the trap that, that all communities fall into. You don't have to be anywhere else. What you have to be is Salisbury. The more Salisbury you become, the more successful it is to be Salisbury. You cannot try to be another place because you will fail. You have to be yourself, but that is what people are looking for. And I would just point out that Berlin has almost nothing, right? Berlin has almost nothing to work with.
He can stay.
I can, right? Berlin has, Berlin has, has very, Berlin is not flush with capital to invest in major projects. Berlin is not, um, uh, uh, is not, does not have the gifts that you guys have in terms of institutions and assets to work from, right? Berlin figured out that if it could be more like Berlin, it would win, right? And now people go there, they hear about it because it is so Berlin-like, right? So that's what you have to do. And when you think about these corridors, don't think about it just, and, and, and your long-term vision, don't just think about it in terms of cost, cause of course there will be cost. Think about it in terms of what is your capacity to generate value through specialness, right? What is your opportunity to generate value? And that becomes the answer to some of your questions about what happens with these properties, right? What happens with these properties that, that are substandard or subpar or vacant or what have you, is that the market will take care of them over time. What'll happen is, the more value you create, the more of an incentive and opportunity there will be for the free market to find a way to take advantage of that value, right? To capitalize on that opportunity. And the more of them do it, the easier it'll be for the next person. So you're gonna start off with a few innovators, and then, and it's just like what's happening with here in downtown, you start off with a few innovators, and then you're getting a few copycats, and then before you know it, it's just the way of doing business. It's just what we do here. And that's what's gonna happen all along Route 13, particularly starting on the southern end, if you can create the incentives and the pioneering projects that, that prove the, prove the model. And then the land value is there, such that people are saying, I don't wanna put $15,000 into making a crummy building slightly less crummy, I wanna go turn this into something great and retire to Bermuda. You know, this is, these are, these are the choices that people will be making.
Retire to Salisbury.
Retire to Salisbury. The last point I would make, and, right, the, the last point I would make goes back to this gentrification issue, just cause I take it very seriously. I'm a former real estate developer, former developer of affordable housing, I take issues of gentrification very seriously, I live in Baltimore City, all very close to my heart. I would say, across this corridor and across the city, the point is not to eliminate change, the point is to make existing communities the beneficiaries of change. And you cannot create affordable housing by driving down quality of life such that demand plummets and, and prices are artificially suppressed because of low quality of life. You're making, then, you're then pretending that, um, a negative indicator of stress is a positive attribute. What you have to do is you have to elevate the quality of life such that the people who have been in those neighborhoods are able to remain beneficiaries of that positive change. But you can't, you can't assume that by keeping things, um, low and unhappy, that you are solving a significant number of problems for people. So that would be my, that's my...
I love, I love technology, and the mayor's watching from Aberdeen right now, and he sent me this text message that say, amen, standards are standards.
That's funny.
It is.
I wanna build a little bit on what you were saying and address the idea that you were bringing up about what's our next industry, um, as if, you know, as Brad said, you have a lot of really great assets already, as if that's not enough. It's great that you want more. So, um, the economy is changing. Nationwide, the economy is changing. And no longer is it the norm to have one big corporate office that everyone works, everyone shows up at nine and everyone leaves at five, and everyone's in the same building, and they all live in the same neighborhood. People are telecommuting, people are working remotely, um, some people are traveling long distances to commute. But a lot of people are attracted to the eastern shore. And maybe it's because they wanna be closer to the water, or they like the lifestyle and the beautiful vistas and, and all of that. Maybe it's because they're just being priced out of the real estate in Fairfax, as you were mentioning. I think you, it's pretty expensive there. And maybe they're just tired of putting all of their money into rent when, uh, and getting an apartment that's too small for what they need. They can still keep the same job, work remotely, and live here and enjoy all that life has here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, can I, can I do one, one more comment? And I'm sorry, you did not have the gavel in your hand. We would be, and, and I clearly respect the, the entire breadth of the city in terms of its community development needs and the importance of us trying to address those. We would be doing a disservice to all of our neighborhoods if we simply said, one standard, we like this, apply it to all of them. There's a reason that Beaglin Park Drive right now has major plans on it for, um, a Harley-Davidson dealer. That's where it goes. That's what I believe we're supporting. We have to separate sometimes our uses and identify areas that we want to make available for things differently than we would next to the hospital, next to the university, or in downtown. Even our own consultants, with the good work that they've done, took the corridor and divided it into six different character zones. We have many more than that in the city. We must address them and we must do something that will work for them.
Point well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since you juxtapositioned, we go from this to chain-linked fences.
I was thinking the same thing. Mr. Holland, dare you come forward and talk about chain-linked fences?
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Hi, Bill, how are you?
Good evening, how are you all? Before you, as a draft, uh, a draft ordinance, uh, amending, you know, part of the zoning code related to fencing.
Yeah.
That's the requirements. Recently, uh, the mayor requested me to, uh, draft some legislation regarding, especially directed towards chain-linked fences and removing them from residential, residential zoned areas and similar districts. The purpose for these changes is in effort to enhance the residential neighborhood aesthetics. We require fences to be constructed materials, um, more consistent to residential, such as final fencing, um, shadow box, uh, fence panels, wooden fence panels, which we're, we're getting, we're issuing a lot of permits for those. And keeping the chain-linked fences, uh, in zoned areas, it's, uh, that you would associate that with, like, uh, general commercial. like general commercial, select commercial, hospital, industrial, light business, institutional, industrial park. And I also added a section in there regarding fence materials that, of materials that are prohibited for them to be made out of, constructed out of, and you've given your recommendation to forward this on to the planning commission for their review and approval, then to come back to city council.
Okay. Is there, everyone had a chance to look it over? Questions?
My only question is, why? In all actuality, it would seem to me that the fence discussion should actually be with the people who were previously with us, instead of with Bill, and that may be a little bit of our disconnect as well. And I was wondering about, you know, if this is what people can afford. As Councilman Rudy Sullivan says, "The market will inherit." If the market can only stand the chain link fence, I just, it's fine with me whatever the council wants to do, but I just, why? Was there a particular place, a particular region, a particular yard that was chain linking? It was bad?
I don't think this came from any one particular property, just the thought being that by getting rid of some of these, we're going to improve property values, and chain link isn't necessarily cheaper than some other fence...
Chain link's usually installed by professional fence installers because you just can't go buy a roll, a huge roll of chain link and the poles. It is more expensive to install, but, you know, it's, the more materials that are out there, that you can get at the different home supply stores, you have a large variety of materials, such as vinyl and the shadow box and the wood stockades.
Do they have to come to you if they change from chain link to something else?
Yes.
If they were going to keep the chain link, would they have to come to you?
It's grandfathered.
It's, well, it's grandfathered. Everybody hear that whisper in here? It's grandfathered.
It's permitted as long as it's there.
I don't have chain link. I don't keep chain link.
We got fun.
Yeah, I have wood. Dog can't get over it.
You're fine.
Do you want to add duct tape in there too, to that prohibited material?
I thought about it.
Do people actually use garage doors for fencing? Oh, Mark, I'm riding around with May. I haven't seen that door.
I haven't seen that.
I've never seen a garage door for fencing, but...
It's possible.
For me, because it's possible. I have seen tarps.
Can we just, I'm not going to have somebody in my inbox tomorrow going, "Dan, you and your new chain link fence stuff, am I?"
Well, anybody that cut a chain link fence is fine. It's only for new.
All right. Just trying to keep my day.
And is there stuff permitted in the other districts, that, you know, the commercial, industrial?
Any other questions? Consensus? Mr. Jackson?
Oh, are you all dead? You're calling me.
I'm just making, I'm just making sure you're awake.
She has you.
Okay. Thank you.
She is coming. I'm not even sure.
We have consensus. Thank you.
It's dinner time.
I took a real chance there. Continuation of our discussion on unsolicited newspapers. I think we had asked for some, Nate, I knew you'd have it. We had asked for some information.
Ask and you shall receive, Mr. President. I have your information. Mind if I just kind of start off on a few of the different things I had written down in response to your questions? First, I have for, in response to Councilman Rudy Sullivan, you had asked me if Alexandria had actually gone ahead and passed their ordinance. And I have right here with me a printout version of what they, the second reading, and enacted it on March 14th of 2009. So, the answer to your question is yes, and if you'd like to see it, I have it right And then, second, in response to Mr. Bota's request, and I think also a few other of you recommended revisions to the ordinance that we presented to you two weeks ago. And so, I went through and we made revisions and submitted them to legal. And in the revisions, I have a copy here, just what I took out, but basically, we eliminated the filing fee to file to be on the list as, and we also stipulated in the document that the list would be available, or there would be a form online to fill out to add your name and your address to the list. And furthermore, we also took away the penalty for violation. So, now, if the statute was violated, there would be no monetary penalty. The publisher would simply need to arrange for the unsolicited document to be removed from the premises of the property, once requested, or once reported that, "Hey, it's on my property. I'm on the list." And we could, of course, then verify that, yes, the property was on the list, and then request that it be removed. And furthermore, we also talked about having, with the list being online, it would make it, we went ahead and changed it to monthly, so it'd be published monthly. We made that change in the document. And with that, as people added their name to the list through the online form, we could set it up so it would be emailed out to publishers that would request to have it, as well as HCD and to maintain the list as well. And so, those were the changes that I remember you had requested. And so, I went ahead and changed all of that and talked to Administrator Glanz about it. And right now, I believe it's sitting in the hands of the legal department.
And I also emailed out an article that was sent to me earlier today on a, Nate's going to pass it out.
And I also, I'll come back.
Okay.
I'll hand it out.
On a town that tried to do a similar thing with, that invoked larger penalties, and we're not even talking about penalties. And the publisher is taking it to court. So, just thought we'd share that information. And I do believe we have representatives...
Without litigation, what is that?
I do believe we have representatives from both papers in the room this evening.
I'd just like to talk for a second on what I just handed you. And so, you'll see, the first document is the letter, or the, I'm sorry, the article that we printed off about another municipality that had passed a similar ordinance. You'll notice that there are some notable differences between what we're trying to do here and what this other municipality did. And you can, of course, read through it for yourself and then come up with any questions you might have. But as you see in there, violators in this municipality would face a $200 fine per violation. And as the administrator pointed out, our revised ordinance doesn't even have any fine. And so, I, really, there's not much of a penalty, just as a way to, once again, hold the publishers and distributors accountable for their actions and respond to citizen requests. And that brings me to the second document that I handed out to you, which was provided to us by the independent, and it's their do not deliver list. And so, you can see, the pages are actually front and back as you flip through it. And so, they do a great job at maintaining a do not deliver list. And so, quite simply, what we'd like to do through this ordinance is just, I mean, they already do a great job at it. We would just be making a citywide list, and that way, we could be, for other publishers, we could also make sure that we're keeping track of things as well, and then emailing that our list out as it's updated. That, just since everybody might not do a thorough, as thorough of a job.
Questions?
Yes, I do have a question.
Okay.
Hey, I'm wondering, what happened to the, you know, that's the statistic on the function, calling, you're making complaints, according to the residential receiving, they're all making complaints about the, delivering the, and the papers.
April, that's the document that...
Hello?
That's the document that Nate was referring to.
I can't hear you. Is that how I'm talking?
That was the document that Nate was referring to.
Okay, because I can't really hear clear, so maybe I haven't mentioned something, but that's one to ask. Because...
Yep. There is...
You'll have that. Yeah.
I'm counting, so just bear with me.
Okay.
Four, sorry, six, eight, sixty, seventy, sixty.
No, I can't tell. Yeah.
I would say there are about sixty-five to eighty. Does that sound right?
We're just all over the county. Yeah.
Yeah, we can't hear you very much, April. There's a lot of talk going on in the background.
We've had some, something about James Burke. Please, I have to say.
Okay. Well, okay.
The majority of those are in the county. The majority of that list is in the county, is what Greg said.
Oh, the majority of this is in the county. So, it's probably, I don't know, I can't tell.
It's not fifty-fifty, but it might be sixty, forty.
So, maybe thirty or forty?
Yeah.
My guess would be thirty or forty, April.
Okay, so are the people going to file complaints?
No, that have requested to be taken off of the independent.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. How many people do we serve that they are, is it basic? That's what I wanted to know.
If I may, we haven't really had, we have had no formal way to track complaints as a city. I mean, and that's another reason for establishing the ordinance. That way, we do have a way to track citizen complaints. Because right now, the only reason we have the documents that we do are because they were provided us by the independent. They were kind enough to do so.
Yeah, April?
But not all publishers are doing that.
If you remember correctly, there aren't, there is no complaint system now in the city.
Okay.
But Greg is here, and he said that, he's the one that gave us the figures. And that was what we asked of them that night they were here. So, it's about forty that were requested to the independent not to be delivered.
Okay.
Now, it does say, April, on Nutters Crossing, high standards, just going to bring that back, make sure all of our agenda items flow together today. They sent them, because they have a no solicitation clause, they sent them a letter and listed the streets. So, is there something about that solicitation clause that obviously gets you in trouble? Or it doesn't get you in trouble? I mean, is that how places that are geographical entities upon themselves, does that help them? Because, could the Harrow leader that sued in the other town go to Nutters Crossing and say, "We want to deliver here, but because Nutters has a no solicitation clause," is that what, is that what gives them the break?
Well, I live in a, I live in one that has a no solicitation, I live in a community, and we all get it.
You get it anyway.
But we want it.
But I'm wondering if you asked, if you asked not to get it where you are, let's say your HOA decided they didn't want to get it anymore. Does the no solicitation clause give the specific geographic area more leeway when it comes to someone like the publisher saying, "First Amendment, you don't get it on your lawn, you deal with it anyway"?
Mr. Tillman, can you help us with that?
Mr. Tillman wasn't...
Question, you know, I, I was, I'm trying to look at...
I guess it's a different suite of options.
Trying to examine the code here with a dead computer.
The no solicitation clause does not help...
What, you mean, if you have a neighborhood that has a no solicitation clause? I think it probably, if it came to, I mean, the court draws the line really between when it comes to First Amendment, whether it's for the purpose of advertising, or whether it's for the purpose of disseminating information. And I think that in a case like that, I don't think a no solicitation clause could stop a real newspaper with real...
That's what I was telling you.
But they might be able to stop the coupon sample or...
My guy, is there a chance that I might have to speak?
Sure. Could you come identify yourself?
Sure. My name is Bill Janis. I am the publisher and president of the Delmarva Media Group, authors of the Daily Times.
Could you use the microphone, please? Sorry, get you on record.
I appreciate the opportunity to step up here. Look, I'm sad that I'm standing here. I couldn't help, eighteen sixty-seven was the year that the county was founded. I think we started printing about fifteen years after that. Ironically enough, the paper in this town, it's called the Wycomica Weekly. Look, you don't have time to waste doing this. We have got to fix this problem, right? So, we know, and I could give you a list after list of precedent on First Amendment rights, on city government's ability to consider newspaper litter. It's going to end up where we don't want to go, all of us wasting our time. What we need to do is figure out, how do we make this better? As some of you may know, in the next couple days, or maybe next couple hours, Willink can deal to move back to downtown. We're bringing the Delmarva Media Group back. We want to be part of what you're trying to accomplish here, right? I don't want to be viewed as somebody who's littering up the streets. But there are an awful lot of people out there who want the newspaper because they can't afford to buy it, okay? They want the news, they want the coupons because it saves them money in the grocery stores and saves them money while they shop. No excuse for us not to be mindful of what we do. Both organizations have do not call lists available every week in the paper. They're printing. You can simply call. We go as so far as to make the bags different colors, so that if we have a contractor that is messing up, we can identify them and address them. What we need to do, in my opinion, is not waste your time on litigation or legislation that you don't have time for, just listening to what you're trying to accomplish here. Shouldn't be worried about whether or not newspapers are littering your streets. We, as an organization, as a media company, and our competitors, need to get together, figure out a plan, and come back to you and say, "We get it. We understand. We know about the First Amendment rights, but we also know what good citizens and what good community members are." And that is to hear what you're saying and go back and fix our problem. So, no disrespect, I've worked at the Baltimore Sun, I've worked at the Wilmington News Journal, I've worked at a large newspaper in Philadelphia, I've worked for Comcast. Never once have I gotten in a situation where I got into a heated, not even a heated, a discussion with the city government or county government. We'll listen, we'll go back, and we'll figure out what we can do to resolve this problem and not waste your time.
Well, I, first, I agree with you that we shouldn't have to do this. The problem is we do, because it's happening. We have, I have gotten personal complaints. One gentleman, who you know, I won't mention his name, but has called on many occasions to get the paper, and I actually called once about the problem, and I was told that it would be rectified, and it wasn't rectified. So, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you a hundred percent. The problem is, we still have an issue. We have an issue with vacant homes, which it's hard for somebody who doesn't live there to send in and get on your note, your list.
You don't have an issue with that. Notice, we have an issue with that because a carrier should not be putting multiple, we have policies in place that multiple copies should not be delivered. And this is the first, I grant it, there was a note that was sent out a couple weeks ago when I was out of town. This is the first I've heard of it. I'd like to fix the problem without wasting your time. You've put the challenge out, I'm sure I can get together with Daryl, and we can come up with a plan. You shouldn't have to do this. Your choice, your city, I get that. But this is, this is an issue that has been talked about for, at nauseam around the country. There are First Amendment rights there. Let's not get there. Let's figure out how we fix the problem. Tell us what you want fixed, challenge us to come back with a plan to get it fixed, and let's get together and find some way to fix it and not waste your time, but also realize that, that if you can, you can do this if you want, but we already have that list, and we're sort of wasting your time. And if you take the fine out of it, what is the incentive for me as a publisher? I want to fix the problem because, quite frankly, I want to come down here and be a good neighbor. We're not coming down here to fight with city council. That wouldn't make any sense. We would move somewhere else in the suburbs.
Well, and I, you know, and I think we all here respect the First Amendment, but there's also the right to be left alone. And I think that's what some of our citizens are asking, are saying, "We don't want this. We want to be left alone. Don't put it on my yard." You know, the, when somebody tells you that, you know, and it's still thrown on the yard, the problem at that point is, is it's, you're asked to not put something on what somebody owns, and it borders, you know, a linesman... and it, and it borders, you know, a line's been crossed. And so we're still having, like, like Jack said, consistent complaints. What we want to do is help you. So that's why we want to give our citizens the opportunity to send in and say, "I don't want this," and it's, and it's sent to you automatically. That's, that, that's what we're trying to help you. We're not, we're not putting a fine in here. But, you know, I think we're trying to find the balance there of people, you know, if I don't want to hear Rush Limbaugh on the radio, I don't turn on the radio. I have that option. But, you know, with other stuff, if, if somebody doesn't want a newspaper, and they're saying, "Don't send it to me," and it's still coming, I, I think that, you know, they don't have, they're, they're asking you to turn it off.
But we're only getting two or three calls. That's what I find that's so ironic, is that we only get, Lou, how many calls do we get?
I mean, typically, there's honestly two or three calls a week from people that have been put on the list.
So maybe we need to make it larger, right? So maybe, maybe you could make the argument that we're not making the, 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 the opportunity quite visible enough in the products, but we're not getting calls, and you would think that they would call us. But it's not in our best interest.
No, we wish they would call you and not call us.
Excuse me. No offense to your publication, I don't even open it up. I pick it up and I drop it in the recycling bin when I see it. Sometimes it's under my car, or my wife's car, and we don't see it for a couple of days. And by the time I do pick it up, it's soggy and wet, and I still have to go, and it's, it's a nuisance, I mean, to me. I don't open it up to look in to see who the call, I just pick it up and throw it in the recycling bin. That's just what I do, you know. I mean, that's, you know, and there's other people in my neighborhood that have complained about it, you know, to me, and, you know, but everybody just picks it up and we throw it in the recycling bin.
My question to you is, did Alexandria and Arlington get sued? Because again...
I, I have, I've, I reached out to them, I left a voicemail for their attorney, I was able to find the link online. Not that I've been able to find. This is, you have the most up-to-date information that I was able to find. And, um, but, and that's just what I've got on that.
Excuse me.
Go right ahead.
Yeah. One of the things that strikes me is that if you want to accomplish this, let's go directly to the source. I understand you're trying to help. I appreciate it. You're trying to set up a citywide mechanism so people can call in and place their name on a do-not-deliver list. My pledge to you is, what if we run ads, and we'd be happy to do this, we'll run ads in our newspaper. We haven't run them in a long time. We'll run them on our websites. And we will advertise our do-not-deliver list, we'll advertise the telephone number, and have the, have the people that don't want the newspapers call us directly. That's how you're gonna get the fastest action. If, on the other hand, you compile a list and mail it to us once a month, that's four more copies of my newspaper that's been delivered theoretically to someone who doesn't want it. And as I said the last time I was here, the last thing I want to do as publisher is to deliver my newspaper to somebody who doesn't want it and doesn't want to read it, because I have enough people that do want it and do want to read it, and it's expensive for me to produce. So I would, I would respectfully petition the council to say, "Give Mr. Janis and I a few minutes or a few days to work this out, and we'll come up with a set of standards, and we'll come back and we'll say, 'Here's what we are prepared to do.' If that's not satisfactory to the council and the mayor and your constituents, and President Heath, I understand, you're getting called, and I don't like getting called either. If that's not satisfactory, then, fine, put the ordinance in place. But at least give us the opportunity to do that."
I, I've been on record stating that I don't like to make rules and laws for every single solitary thing. But I, I do think that there, some action is required. If I may suggest, I would hold it for one more work session meeting and let them come up with their plan, and if we, we'll discuss it, and if it sounds like it's gonna resolve the problem...
That's fine.
That'll be fine.
That's two weeks.
But I will tell you, the problem better be resolved because, well, you know, we, I mean, and, and I don't mean this flippantly, but, and I know Mr. Irtan gets them, I get them. I, I can't tell you the range of calls that we get. But for, the, the most that I get is for newspaper delivery. I will say that. And it's frustrating.
Completely understood.
And they always, and guess when they call? Dinner.
Ten o'clock at night.
Dinner. Always at dinner. So, I mean...
Could you, and, and this is what I worry about, because without a, I don't know, I'm afraid someone will say, "Well, that was an industry-led study." If you were to put at the end of Philadelphia Avenue, one of the old boxes for The Daily Times, and one of the boxes for Salisbury Independent, would as many of those, let's just say for our purposes this evening, that The Daily Times was free, we put those two down there, could you assure me that all those papers, as many papers as you put out on those lawns would be taken out of those two dispensaries at the end of the street? Because I'm trying to figure out whether or not there might be a, so if that's not the case, and you want to give it to people who have it, then maybe we ought to have a registry for the people who want it instead of the people who don't want it. I, I'm, it's two thousand sixteen, seventeen, sixteen, I'm trying to be younger. Coupons, you have your bonus card. I recognize that there is a small group of people who do not yet have access to the internet and all of the wonderful things that go along with that, but I'm just not satisfied that that's enough people to, to justify. And it, and to both of you honestly, and there's a wonderful lady here who also delivers, I don't know who you deliver to me, but the abject use of that middle finger when I ask politely, when I ask politely for my neighbor...
To not deliver them?
To not deliver them. It is, now granted, I should do what I should do, and I should go in and I should call you. I should, but I thought, you know what, I don't want to get this person in charge with their boss. I don't want to do that. So when I say, as the trucks go past, yeah, I'm like Bugs Bunny when they're on their way to Albuquerque, "Do you guys mind if I..." You know, and then when they realize what it is I'm talking about, and the gesture that says, "I'm not really working about your problem, Mr. Irtan." I, I just, I'm ready, I'm willing to go for another week or two, but without some sort of scientific-based, maybe we let them run it, we see how many calls they get, maybe...
Yeah, and I'd like to see if we could, if you would share with us what you, what you have in mind, right? Would you draft it as a program, and we'll take a look at the bones of that program. And I will tell you, opt-in programs are expensive, right? And, and to go through it, it costs a lot of money. And there are, believe it or not, probably, no disrespect, there are an awful lot of people who make, uh, working moms, work, two-working income families, such as you're not, that rely on coupons and rely on that. Listen, if we could make all the coupons digital, our largest expense is pretty newspapers, right? We all know that the world's moving to a digital format, and we're managing that transformation, but there's still an awful lot of people who rely on those to make ends meet. And not everybody can afford to put out a dollar and a half or even to get a subscribe to it, or they don't want it. They want a free publication because they offer good alternative ways to get the news in Salisbury. But we just have to be careful that we just don't turn around and say, "Hey, if you're not paying, you're not getting it." But we will look at it and see if we can come up with something. I, I think that's...
Okay, if you would get it to Ms. Glanz so that we can have it the Friday before the next, from, two weeks from now.
Certainly we will share with you what you have.
Certainly we can. Thank you so much.
If I may, Mr. President, in response to Councilman Irtan and Vice President Voda, I mean, this is why we have the ordinance crafted the way that we do. We truly believe that it's the happy medium where we're just serving the citizens of Salisbury in the best way that we can. It's not an opt-in list because then that would serve to the disadvantage of the publisher, who has their First Amendment right that states, you know, Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech or of the press. Yet, having the more opt-out list where you're signing up to be on the do-not-deliver list, that way, we're not abridging that right, we're just saying, "Respect my right to not have it if I sign up to not get it." And, um, but in response to the councilmen, the, the reason we didn't go with the opt-in list was actually because that's where California got into some hot water with, legally with the First Amendment. So it was just, um, our, our understanding that this would be the happy medium to just serve all parties involved to the best way, the best way that we could.
Okay, just to, just to do this, something I did in the mixed room, so let's, uh, April, if you can hear me, would you please, would you want to proceed with this or wait for the two weeks? Mr. Voda?
I'd like to see what they come up with, but I, I think our solution was kind of where it was us trying to help you, where you might have somebody who, I mean, ours was creating a simple form on our website where somebody could go to. Soon as somebody goes in and puts information in that form that, "I don't want this," you would get an email.
And I think we can incorporate that into the plan. I think that's perfect. The more contracts they have towards it, the better. I think what I'm trying to say, at least from a, a, a major corporation standpoint, I'd rather work with you locally and figure this out than to try to do something that, of which I go back and report to my corporation, and the first thing they do is get all kinds of lawyered up, and we come in and we, we don't want that. For the local government, we're the local media companies, we need to figure out together how we get this problem solved. And a last resort, would you hopefully, hopefully, that we are smart enough to get it figured out, a last resort is you telling us how we should run our business, because it's not really, you've got too much stuff on your plate. But I think it's a fair deal to throw it back into our court and say, "Hey, guys, we got a problem, come back and go play with us."
And I, and I think our, our offer was to say, you know, we're not sitting here telling you how to run your business. We're just saying, "Hey, we're passing on information from a citizen that says, 'I don't want this, don't deliver it to my house.'" That's simply what we're passing on to you. It was a simple form, it doesn't take our guy that long to make it up, and you get instant information.
But it won't fix all the problems, and I don't mean to delay this, because if there are multiple deliveries to households that are vacant, they're not gonna put a do-not-deliver list on there. It's better, what we do with the list thing, we've also got to make sure that we come back with a plan of which more, more cautious with the way our contractors deliver, seeing a paper out there, seeing a bag out there, there are not multiple deliveries.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rudisil?
I'll, I'll wait till two weeks.
I'd rather move on tonight.
Okay. Ms. Jackson? You, you're, you're okay with waiting, right?
No, I only did that because I, it was wonderful to be told about our history, but in the underlying was, we're gonna sue you anyway. So it, it far be it from me to have a disagreement with The Daily Times. It's not like it hasn't happened in the last twenty-five years, so we're all good. That's fine.
Next item on you, thank you very much, appreciate it. Mr. Cordree, come on up. Right ahead.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we have just a, a few clarifications of our policy on non-beneficial use of water and sewer. If you turn to the page that is headed up, Water and Sewer Utility Directive, I'll walk you through a couple of the changes here that, or a summary of the changes that have taken place. The first bullet is, nothing's really changed here. The second bullet, we've taken the opportunity to clarify what beneficial use of water means, and so that people will better understand a non-beneficial use so that when they experience a non-beneficial use, it'll be clear. The third paragraph, you can see that the account holder needs to submit evidence that the problem is fixed and that Public Works needs to confirm that the leak has been repaired. So in order to receive this, this adjustment, those two things have to happen. Uh, there's no change in the fourth paragraph, no, no change in the fifth. We've, we've, in the, in the next paragraph, we state that account holders will be eligible for only one occurrence within a three-year period. That's, that's not changed. But we note that, and clarify, it's always been the policy, but it wasn't written, that it will reset with a change in property ownership, but not with a change in tenant. Okay, gotcha. All right. And the last two, or three are added. The next paragraph says that the, the, this adjustment is limited for a six-month period. Can't bring us, um, a request of something that's older than that? Yeah, yeah. Uh, the next item is a discussion, a definition of how the credit will be applied. If it's within two weeks of a new invoice, we're just going to process a credit versus a refund. And that's, uh, as far as late fees, we, we need, want people to pay their bill, their invoices, and then if that they qualify for the credit, um, they'll receive the credit. But to avoid late fees, they need, they need to pay the bill. Yeah, they need to keep up with their bill, keep it current.
Any questions? Ms. Jackson, any questions? Guess not. Okay. Okay, no problem.
Most of this was, was in practice, what was occurring, we just felt like we had an opportunity to tighten it up a little bit and put in writing.
Yeah, I think the definition certainly helped and made it clear. Ms. Irtan, any questions?
No.
Move forward. We have consensus, we'll move it forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, when you don't argue, when you don't, you don't... The mayor had sent out a, a note to us about, uh, some of the changes that are being proposed that would impact us from the federal level. And Theo's been kind enough to come tonight to sort of synopsis, if we can, and try to keep it like fifteen minutes. When you see me go for the gavel, you know. But, okay. Oh, okay, all right.
First of all, non-beneficial use, that's a leak, right?
That's a leak.
That's a very complicated term for a leak.
Yes, it is a leak. Well, it may not be a leak.
Just non-beneficial.
Non-beneficial.
I typically use a lot of beneficial water, what can I say? So the mayor wanted to present a united front from the city in regards to the president's proposed budget. I believe that would take the form of a letter to our congressmen and senators. I don't know, Julia, if the mayor had anything else in mind. Yeah, I think that was...
That was pretty much, when he talked with me, it was to see if we could come up with a consensus of touching base and responding to the impact of some of these things that, like, block grants, community block grants, which, which would have some significant impact on us. So...
And yeah, I just want to take this from a kind of broad stance. I mean, everyone analyzed across the board, say, "This budget's dead on arrival." This budget is not gonna pass in this form. It is, like Mr. Trump likes to say, "The art of the deal." So this is where he's starting out with, fifty-four billion dollars worth of cuts across the board. And it's really a matter of us as local entities to kind of decide which things we're gonna fight for the most. So I know I sent you a very lengthy email. I'm really happy with Luke because, or Nate, because he's really lengthy, makes me happy. As the council president said, for us directly, the biggest impact is community development block grant. That's about three hundred thousand a year, and that is something that we and many other municipalities need to fight for. Supposedly, one of the rationales for that is that it's gonna be included in a yet-to-be-seen infrastructure bill. However, that would only be infrastructure. CDBG does a lot more than just infrastructure. It does down payment assistance, we're using it for homeless services case manager, it's part of our administration. So it really is a very large and diverse program that really could be very restricting for us if it isn't passed. And then just, I kind of go down the list of all these various things. Some of them, you know, what I kind of term as like the less sexy items, like low-income home energy assistance program. That's something that sounds really boring, but it's actually what, like, allows people to get their heat turned back on.
I was gonna say, that's very sexy, that's not...
It's, but it's, it's one of those that, like the community services block grant, may sound innocuous, but is actually very beneficial. And then...
The cops grant? The COPS grant?
Well, the COPS grant is good. So, and this is where, of course, Mr. Trump was rather vague in many sections, and one of those was the Department of Justice. He just said, "We will be protecting programs that benefit law enforcement, but eliminating duplicative and, I forget what the word is, but unnecessary programs." So when you're talking about, you know, billions of dollars in grant funding, we really don't know what those would be. My understanding is the COPS grant would stay, the body armor grant would stay. Other than that, we really don't know. So if we're looking at anything to do with substance, he says that they will increase the funding for that, and hopefully that's something that will remain in the final budget. But I guess it's kind of, I'm assuming that all of council, you know, is against the drastic cuts, and I didn't know if there's anything in particular that council would like to stress, you know, for instance, Meals on Wheels or something like that.
Well, isn't that covered on a community block?
Yeah, that's community service block.
If it's the art of the deal, then we should be stressing everything, because we're trying to be anchored into a position.
And I think that that should be our, your right.
When was the last time Congress actually passed a budget?
Yeah.
At least everything is supplemental.
I would still want to send a strong signal saying that, yeah, we're absolutely for...
So I guess what we're looking for is consensus, the mayor will probably draft the letter, based on my conversation with him.
Most likely, I draft the letter.
And then we would read it, and if we agree, we would co-sign the letter. Do you have any issues with that? April, do you have any issues with that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, I guess the reason I'm saying something specific is, I mean, generally I think our senators are across the board in favor of it, but I don't know if there's any type of testimonies, particularly Congressman Harris, that you might want to stress at all. If you do want anything, I can put it in there, but just let me know.
I think we...
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I have faith in you to make the right...
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
I think that we have to, my approach is very simple. If it affects our ability to provide the services that we need in our city to our citizens, then we need to be on board with making sure that our statement is heard.
Yep, can do.
I echo that sentiment.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions?
Cool, yeah.
Good enough. Thank you, Theo.
Oh, I did want to say, whenever I come here, it's usually depressing, so I was wondering if I could have, like, ride of the Valkyrie whenever I walk up from now on? Just a request, but...
Good night, Theo.
There's copyright issues with that, because it's a public performance.
If you do it on Apocalypse Now, I can...
Any other business? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, April.